The Youth Commission, a favor.
I'd like to bring the meeting of Tuesday, March 7th to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Cruz, Councilmember Hewer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson. Here. Mayor Powers.
Thank you. We'll reconvene to open session. Do we have a motion for that? Don't need no, okay. There was two closed session items tonight, but council did not meet on that, so those will be continued to a future meeting. Next item is, the audience would rise for a silent prayer and flag salute, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Donna, could you read the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, March 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 11th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meetings are also archived on the city's website.
Thank you. Are there any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions? Knowing nothing, we'll move on to presentations. First one, office. And who will be, will the chief be doing that?
Say a few words.
Go ahead and say a few words if you'd like. Anthony, you want to come up? Stand right in the middle. Bring your wife. And if all eight of your kids are here, bring them too.
Yeah. Oh, how cute.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, why? The baby, oh, my gosh.
So, good evening. My name is Todd Stockman, the Chief Police for the Police Department here in Galt. And one of the biggest pleasures, and could be the most challenging, is hiring police officers, the right ones, for each city that you work for. And Galt is a very unique city in the sense that, I'm not too sure that we have too many places in this state, great state of California, that has a community that loves their cops and the cops equally love the community. That shows every day in the way we do our business, the way we conduct ourselves, the interactions we have with our community, our volunteers, the people that come out every day to help support this great city. So hiring the right police officers is crucial. And so Anthony Castaneda came and applied for a position as a recruit, and that is somebody that we sponsor and send through the police academy. And so, many, many interviews, a lot of grilling, especially by me. We have a connection, both of us are Air Force veterans. I had a real job, he helped load planes, I don't, you know. But still nonetheless, both veterans, so that was a big honor to have a veteran come in and be able to put him through the academy. Graduated from Delta Academy about a month ago. Tremendous showing, and this is the first opportunity we've had to introduce him to all of you and have him officially sworn in here in front of everybody. Anthony is married, has eight children. I asked him if he's done, if his wife is done, and he can't answer that question. Resident of Stockton, and so far last month, he's been doing a great job. His Galt family is here in the back to support him. His field training officer is here to support him. Some of our volunteers are here from the Police Department, cats are here to support him. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Donna for the swearing in.
I am, state your name.
I am Anthony Castaneda.
You solemnly swear.
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As an employee of the City of Galt.
As an employee of the City of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
According to the best in my ability.
I do want to say something. I want to thank my wife. There's no way I could have even pursued this dream that I had. It's 18 years that I've been wanting to become a police officer, and it wasn't for her support the whole way through, my entire life and my career, getting to this point. There's no way I could have made it without her. So without her and my family and my mom and dad sitting over here and other family members that couldn't be here, but they supported me all the way through it. I have a good support family. Also, too, just been with the Galt Police Department prior to the academy since July of 2016. They've been friendly, they've been helping me so much and getting me through the process and the position of being a police officer. So I'm so excited to be able to be part of that team and brotherhood and sisterhood of Galt Police Department. But I'm also excited for the community. I'm looking forward to bringing my family here and also just immersing myself within this community and to do whatever I can to serve this, to serve the people of Galt. So I just want to appreciate and thank you for allowing me this wonderful opportunity.
Next item we have is the presentation, Galt Community Character Coalition Certificate Presentation, and Mary Martinez here, good to do this.
Good evening. I've asked Barbara Payne to join me here, too. And tonight, we'd like to present an award for caring and compassion to a resident here in Galt. We'd like to call up Amy Sandu. Amy Sandu is a true model of caring and compassion for the Galt community. Her willingness to quietly care for others is a special trait and one that is valued in our community. An example is her sharing the Christmas spirit with Galt community members, especially seniors and local businesses. Her spirit of joy and giving is not restricted to the Christmas season, but is seen all year round. If there is a need in the community, she does not hesitate to offer help. Her family's origin is East India, and she and her family go back to visit their hometown from time to time. But her heart is also in Galt, and she displays her love for Galt with how she treats others and how she regularly volunteers her time and her help. Her friendship is valued, for she is always there when asked to help the Galt community. She has a heartfelt concern for all those she comes in contact with. It is important for the community to realize how lucky we are to have a citizen that has so much caring and compassion for those in our town. Amy Sandu has a heart of gold and never asks or expects anything in return. She is truly a role model of caring and compassion, and she was nominated by Barbara Payne. Amy?
I would like to thank the Galt Community Character Coalition of City of Galt. And giving me this award, I feel very honored and proud. I'd also like to thank city council and the city staff for supporting us in every way, in each way that you guys could. And I would like to do a special thanks to Barbara Payne also. She is the one who encouraged me to get involved in all the various committees. And if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be standing here today, accepting this award. And I would also like to say a few words. It is very important to be involved in community and building the character with good value and goodwill, and to set things, these good examples for the generations to come. My family and I are very proud to be a part of this city. And our kids went to school here in Galt, and now our grandkids are also attending the same schools as our kids did. I have met so many people throughout, in our town, that have so many outlooks and had made, had made some great lifelong friends for me. I really enjoy spending the time and helping others or any community events or anything I can, wherever I needed, I'm there for them. And I would like to say thank you to everybody for giving me this award.
Thank you, Amy. Next item is public comment. Do I have any speaker? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. I don't have any one for this section, but for agenda item.
Okay, then we'll skip that. Next item is information consent calendar. Could you read those, please? Donna?
Minutes of the regular meeting, February 21st, 2017. Receive and file warrants for the period ending February 21st, 2017, and the treasures report for period ending January 2017.
Do we have a motion on that?
Mosted to approve.
Have a second.
I thought you seconded, I seconded.
Oh, no, second.
It sounded like you just said second. Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Next items are regular calendar. Community Development Department, subject is discussion of options for regulating the cultivation of marijuana in compliance with Proposition 64. Mr. Arias.
Good evening. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item you have before you, oh, do we got presentation? Well, that's okay, we're going to go ahead and start. I thought we had a presentation that was on there. As you know, the item you have before you is a discussion on the options relating to Prop 64 and specifically the cultivation of recreational marijuana. As you know, voters press Proposition 64, which legalizes the recreational use of marijuana. There are aspects of Prop 64 other than cultivation, but tonight's presentation will focus solely on the cultivation of marijuana. The law pertaining to Prop 64 states that people over 21 years old have the ability to cultivate, possess, plant, harvest, or process up to six marijuana plants. The six plant maximum applies per parcel, not per person, and is a cumulative total of both indoor and outdoor if the city chooses to allow both indoor and outdoor cultivation. Cities can reasonably regulate personal cultivation, but are prohibited from banning indoor cultivation. The city has the option of completely banning outdoor personal cultivation of marijuana or allow it with some regulation like setbacks, height limits, or other reasonable requirements. The city may not ban indoor personal cultivation of marijuana. State law allows for the indoor cultivation to occur either in a primary residence or inside an accessory structure that is fully enclosed and secure. The city could also require a permit imposing special fire, electrical, or other similar items that the city deems necessary to protect health and safety. Other cities have enacted or are in the process of enacting regulations pertaining to marijuana. The City of Elk Grove, I believe, they presented their ordinance, their planning commission last week. They are recommending banning outdoor cultivation, but are allowing indoor cultivation both in an accessory structure and also in a primary residence. They do not require a permit. The City of Rancho Codova recently enacted an ordinance very similar to Elk Grove where they ban the outdoor cultivation, but they're allowing indoor cultivation in an accessory structure and also in the primary residence. But they are requiring a permit or cultivation permit for their grows. Lodi also has a recent ordinance, and they're similar to Elk Grove, where they ban outdoor, but allow indoor in both, in an accessory building and also in the primary residence. During the city council December 2016 discussion on marijuana cultivation options, there seemed to be some concern regarding prohibiting outdoor grows and also requiring a permit. Since that meeting, the police chief and I met with members of the public regarding the various options for cultivation. And based upon discussion with these folks and input, well, and also staff research, staff prepared a couple draft ordinances, which are in your staff report package as Options A and B. However, after further review, including discussion today, staff decided or determined that a combination of both options may be the best way to go forward. We believe that in combining both of these options, it gives residents numerous ways to grow marijuana, but then also provides for public safety and potential nuisance issues. And so what we're recommending is allowing indoor cultivation in an enclosed accessory structure. The accessory structure must meet setbacks as required in the municipal code, and this would require no special cultivation permit, so in a necessary structure with no permit. Also, we would recommend allowing outdoor grows, but to be in containers of no greater than 25 gallons, and then the placement of the plants must meet the setbacks of the main structure. And it's believed by allowing the outdoor grows in the containers that we can control, it'll control the growth to a certain extent, but we still may want to limit the height to six feet so we can't see them from neighboring properties. And also by having the setbacks of the main structure, you're moving the plant away from the property line, which can help mitigate any potential impacts from the plant itself. And we're also recommending allowing the indoor cultivation in a primary residence. And so the outdoor grow wouldn't require cultivation permit either. So for the two grows in an accessory structure and also in So for the two grows in an accessory structure, and also in the outdoor, in the container, we're not recommending a permit or cultivation permit process for that. But if, we are recommending allowing in a primary residence, but if they are to grow in a primary residence, then we are recommending a permit process. And in this manner, it can, it can be consistent with state law, where we're allowing the grow in the primary residence, but we can control the process through, you know, cultivation permit, and this can ensure some safety features are met. The, the proposed ordinance would also allow for cultivation of up to six plants, consistent with state law, require landlord or property owner permission for cultivation of marijuana, and then prohibit commercial cultivation. And that concludes staff presentation. We're seeking council direction on a ordinance. As mentioned, we are recommending a combination of approaches of Options A and B in the staff report, which is, again, allowing a limited outdoor grow in containers of 25 gallons or less, allowing the grows in an enclosed accessory structure, and both of those with no cultivation permit, but then allow grows in a primary residence with a cultivation permit. Staff will create this ordinance, and bring it to the planning commission for recommendation to city council, and once it's gone through that process, we would be back to you for approval. And again, that concludes staff presentation. Would be available to answer any questions you might have.
Council have any questions?
I do. So the permit or inspection fees? So the permit would be for the lighting and, I mean, what would the permit be in telling? I mean, what are you, what's staff proposing in the way of the permit process and the inspection fees? What are we inspecting for?
Well, that will be created, but the thought is, is that the permit process and the fee that would accompany it for the primary residence. So we're only recommending that we require cultivation permit when it's being grown in the primary residence inside the house. We haven't determined a fee yet, but presumably, the fee can cover the cost of staff time to go in and inspect the, the unit, but we haven't really determined that yet. We would create, you know, that process as part of the ordinance. But the belief is, is that we can limit and inspect, you know, what type of lighting they're putting into the facility, where they're putting it, making sure, you know, any standards we put in place are complied with. So it gives us the ability to basically control and protect, you know, the health and safety of the main house.
So are you proposing that, so a, a member of the public would come forward, purchase a permit, go set up their grow, and then we would go out and inspect it? Would be a one-time inspection?
Presumably, yes. We haven't quite developed that far into the process. We would look at other cities to see what they are doing, and their permitting processes, and come up with something similar, but I would think it would be tailored to something in that manner.
Wouldn't they, not to interrupt you, but wouldn't they, if they came forward to say, "I wanna do an indoor grow," wouldn't they come in and demonstrate to you, either by a plan or whatever, what modifications they plan to make?
That's correct.
If it's based on those modifications, that would be the purpose of the inspection, if I understand.
That's correct, yeah.
So need to be plumbing, or electrical, or...
Yeah, that's correct. So the permit, anytime a permit of any type is given, you know, you're giving some detail of what they're actually doing, so it would give us the opportunity to see where they're putting it, and then whatever type of modifications they're making to the home. We would put, replace standards for grows inside, and that could be, you know, looking at other cities, they don't allow the use of generators, so to make sure there's no external power sources hooked up, making sure that the rooms are safe and secure, that they're not using a number of rooms to grow, you know, the marijuana in. So, you know, through this process, you know, we hope to, you know, look through those details, and when we come back to council with that ordinance, we would have more of that, at that time.
If I may, we included in the packet as well, some sample permit regulations, which would include, which proposed a permit requirement, which would have an inspection at the time they requested a permit, that it would be conducted by city, city staff, including that not limited to code enforcement, building, and fire officials of the city's discretion. So those are some ideas that we have at the moment, and one suggestion we had was an expiration date on the permit. In the proposed one we provided, it would be one year, which would allow them for subsequent inspection at the annual time, to make sure they're complying with the six-plant limits and the fire codes.
Thank you.
But, Ms. Hood, I guess my, so you bring in a plan that shows that you're going, that you have the intention to cultivate cannabis inside your home. And I, I guess my concern is, is that when, generally, you know, let's say I'm gonna add, I'm gonna, if I go and pull a permit to change electrical, I pulled a permit prior to changing the electrical, and then there's, you know, inspections, or, you know, scheduled. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, when would the inspection be done? After somebody sets up their grow, and then we go in and inspect? Or we're going in and inspecting before?
So I would think it would be after. I mean, if you treat it like a typical permit, you're absolutely correct. You know, and as Councilmember Campion stated, when someone submits for a typical building permit, they submit the plans, the plans are looked at, and made sure that they conform to, you know, local and state requirements, and then after they're finished, you know, completing whatever work they're doing, they then call for that inspection, because now they're complete and ready for that final inspection. So I would anticipate that, you know, this permit process would follow that to some degree, you know, that we would then look at what they're doing, after they have completed the work, similar to the other permitting processes.
Okay.
Any questions?
One of the things we were asking to define was the definition of public and public use. Is that a whole nother issue that we're working on that's coming later?
Yes, the public use, you mean, like the consuming and smoking in public?
And defining a public space.
Yes, so that is part of the next step. We wanted to make sure we addressed the cultivation first, since we had the urgency ordinance in December, and we didn't wanna extend that too long. So we just wanted to start with cultivation, and then we'll be coming along with the other pieces.
Okay.
So, and just a reminder that, you know, again, the cultivation permit would be for inside the primary structure of the main house, that we are not recommending a permit for an outdoor grow, that wouldn't really make too much sense. And then also, in the accessory structure, we're not recommending a permit process for it either. And we think that providing these options allows us to be consistent with state law. It gives us an opportunity to protect public safety to as much as, you know, the city reasonably can, but then also provide options for the public to, you know, grow their marijuana if they so wish.
Okay.
Do you have another question?
I have a question on the accessory structure. So are these accessory structures that are less than 120 square feet, or over 120 square feet?
You know, it's presumed to be less than 120 square feet. I don't believe they'll need over 120 square feet to specifically grow marijuana, but if somebody, to grow six plants, because that is the maximum amount. But if somebody had an accessory structure, and was using a portion of it to grow, and maybe had another portion for storage, maybe that's possible, so it could be a little bit of both. The setbacks do vary, depending upon the size of the structure, so...
Could you, could you, for the benefit of the audience and council, let us know what that is?
Yeah, the, for under 120 square feet, you're looking at five feet from the side property line, and five feet from the rear. The only difference for a structure greater than 120 square feet is it then adopts the setbacks of the main structure, which is then five from the side, and then 10 from the rear. So they're similar, but there's just a little bit of a rear setback difference.
So if I were to build an accessory structure with electrical and water, plum to it, I would just get a regular permit for an accessory structure? I wouldn't have to say what I was building my accessory structure for?
Technically, that's correct. And it depends on the size of the structure. Under 120 square feet by itself does not require a building permit. If it's over 120 square feet, without any electrical or plumbing, would require a building permit, but then any electrical or plumbing requires a building permit.
Technically, you're supposed to get a plumbing permit when you install irrigation systems. People don't do that. I mean, it's, it's just one of those things, but technically, if you read the code, that's what it says. So in this case, it would be, I would think something similar. People would be hooking up some sort of watering system with, I guess, within the structure.
You would think, other than going in and manually watering every day.
On the...
Public comment.
Oh, okay. I don't have any more questions, so. We do have one, one public comment at this point. Adam Galati?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you, guys. All right, so, I didn't have time to review the entire agenda that Chief Sockman sent me. It's pretty lengthy, but I do agree with a lot of this stuff, and I just wanted to get my part on it, on the grower side of things, how I feel about it, so. The Agenda Report, Section C, page number four, seems to be right in line with what we had discussed about previously, regarding the outdoor structures, and the auxiliary structures to grow, and the greenhouses, seems to be a viable option to people that I've spoken to, who grow outdoors, so they think that's a, a good option. Same thing with the 25-gallon pot sizes, that seems to be feasible as well. So those are all good things that we see. As far as the, the permits that you were referring to, the accessory structure's outside. I was kinda curious about, if someone's running electrical and plumbing, is kinda, I think, what you were referring to, if someone's running electrical and plumbing and stuff like that, isn't that gonna require a permit, even though it is an auxiliary structure? So, okay. So, and then in also regards to that, growing indoors with permits, who is going to be authorizing? I mean, no offense to you guys, but have you guys ever set up a grow room or anything like that? You know, it's like, who's going to come in and say, "Okay, this is, this is all legit." You know, this, this makes sense, this is all, how, I mean, I'm just trying to, you know, so who is going to be enforcing that? The permit idea seems fine and everything like that, but we're just trying to figure out who is going to actually come up with those laws that way. They work for us, and it's not just a law that you guys just created, just because you thought it made sense, is what I'm trying to say, so. So that was my part, at least on the permitting part of it. One second, just to review my notes. Yeah, and I think, yeah, so I think that's pretty much it, yeah. I'm gonna review the agenda that you sent me, but yeah, no, I, I really do, I think we're moving in the right direction. Like I said, the people that I've spoken to all seem to be on the same page with being able to grow outdoors, and especially with limited space, and being able to grow in the 25-gallon buckets. And, yeah, I don't wanna repeat myself anymore, but yeah, I think we're, we're doing good, so. I thank you guys for your time, and actually spending the time to come up with some common sense laws, and helping out the community, so thank you guys very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? You can give your name.
Hi, my name is Greg Davidson. I'd like to, first off, start by thanking the city council, and especially the city staff, the chief, planner, our contract attorney, everyone who is involved in this. I realize this is a very new thing, that a couple of years ago, I doubt any of you would have thought that we'd be having this, this discussion the way we are. I'm glad that we are, I'm glad to see the, the city staff, councils, everyone taking this serious, because this is a serious, serious matter. I do have one bone of contention with what I've seen so far, and I did a quick Google search while I was in the back, to have some facts backing up. There's been a grand total of one municipality in the state of California that has required inspection and a fee for indoor grows, and that would be Palm Springs. Palm Springs is now in court draining their budget to fight this thing, and they're going to lose. We know they're going to lose. I have lived here in this city for 25 years, and I am really tired of seeing city money going to either a contract attorney, no, no, nothing against you, ma'am, or to the city attorney, to fight lawsuits that in the end, we know they're going to lose. The powers of inclusion in this country have always won out over the powers of exclusion, and I would really hate to see Galt be one of those test cases. I would very much like to reach out to the people that, that reached out to the members of the community, the chief, a couple of the council members, spoke to people in the community, got to know more about this, but I, I really do think that we need to look seriously at coming into people's houses. If I wanna grow orchids in my house, nobody's gonna come into my house and check my wiring, make sure that my drainage is right, make sure I'm using, that I'm only growing six orchids, or, or anything like that. If I wanna grow tomatoes in my house, nobody's going to come into my house and, and want to inspect my, the pesticides that I'm using, or anything like that. I think one thing that the, that you do need to do is, is take a step back, and think for a second, we're not, we don't wanna be outlaws, those of us that grow. My growing days are way beyond me. I'm, I'm here to support people like Adam, and the other people in the community, and the voters who voted for this. That's the key. The voters of the state of California have approved this. Do we wanna be like Palm Springs? Do we wanna see thousands and thousands of dollars go to fight a case that we're going to lose in the end? I don't think so. But I do really want to thank everyone that showed up tonight. I wanna thank Adam, I know you've been a real, a real mover in the community. Pleasantly surprised to see the attitude of law enforcement, has come a long way since I was a kid. Maybe the chief and I've got a little Air Force connection there as well. And I'd like to thank the members of the council for giving this the thoughtful debate that it really deserves. A few years ago, this kinda thing would have gotten laughs out of the, out of the city council, and now here we are, having thoughtful discussions, fact-based discussions. But one thing we need to remember, Palm Springs, the money that they're spending, research it. It took me two minutes on a Google search to find out if there's any, any California communities having a problem with it, and there are, and we don't wanna be, we don't wanna be that. So, working with the city, working with law enforcement, working with people like Adam, who's, I'm hoping, an active member of the society, people like myself, who are retired members of, of that community, we can all work this out. We really can. I'm open for, for any questions, anytime. I'm in the phone book, just look me up.
Mr. Davidson, you'll have to wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson.
Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt for many years. I've seen a lot of the good, the bad, and sometimes very ugly. I couldn't let this keep going, because there was nothing that I, either against it, of what's happening. I couldn't let this keep going because there was nothing that I, either against it, uh, of what's happening here. I think what was voted on by the people is the same thing, that, you know, we should do what the majority of the people say, right? No. We got a president that was voted on, not by the majority of the people, and everyone loves him. So, the thing is, I'm gonna ask a question or two, and I'm gonna be very naive about it, 'cause I don't know. I buy a house, and next to this house, we have the people in here growing their little pots. Outside, they're growing them, and my little five-year-old or six-year-old daughter, son, has got a bedroom 10 feet away, I think that's the specs, or maybe 15, I don't know, and they need some air circulation in their house, so they open their windows. What happens when, and I'm assuming that marijuana smells or has a scent of some type, gets out of their house that they're growing it in, and goes into my house where my child is? Um, is there any type of enforcement that could be done there? On the other hand, in the backyard, we've got these nice grums that are growing these beautiful-looking plants, and, uh, a ball goes over the fence, and so on, like, you know, it's not legal to jump over the fence and get the ball, but they do it, and they're, these plants are all grown in their backyard. Maybe the owner's not home. I- is there any kind of laws, or moral rights, or anything that can protect our children that never asked for this, couldn't vote for this, uh, to protect them? I, I would like to see some type of enforcement, but it doesn't look like we're gonna have any. So, if the whole nation is saying, "Let's grow it, let's enjoy it, let's use it for medicinal purposes," well, then go to the doctor and get someone to recommend it. And then you can go buy it if you have to have it, if this is the only source. To me, this is just one step closer to a stronger one. And then that'll be one step closer to a stronger source. It's gonna keep going and going and going. I'm not saying not to listen to the people, 'cause that's what this country was built on. You know, it, it's, it's right, but I'd like to know what I'm gonna do with my five kids, or two kids, or one kid that's living next door, and these houses on each side, maybe, are growing marijuana, or pot, or whatever you wanna call it, and they're breathing it in. Now, maybe there's no physical reason to worry, because they breathe it in, it's just like fresh air outside, maybe some sit gets in the air, it's not gonna harm 'em, right? I'm just guessing. Uh, that would be nice if it didn't, but I just have a strange feeling that a lot of this is going to start happening. Now, as for crime, sure, we got the best police department in, in, in the whole area, I think. So, when the call comes in about somebody just broke into this wonderful house, that's got all these beautiful little plants growing, uh, they're gonna have to respond to it, so maybe that's gonna make the police department work a little bit harder. Uh, I don't know if you could work any smarter, 'cause you can't really go into the house and check them whenever you want, and you have to have the reason. But what about my kids? What am I gonna do with them? Can I complain about 'em? Can I, can I say, "Close your windows on yours," it's gotta be totally, it's gotta have a tarp over it. I don't want any of this smoke. You came after I moved in. My kids are here. They go to school. They smell like it, maybe, because of their clothes. What are we gonna do? What, what moral obligation do we as citizens have to watch over our children and go to our law enforcement and say, "Can you help me?" And they can look at you and say, "We'd love to help you." I just don't know exactly how we're gonna help you. So, the kids grow up, five years, elementary, high school, they learn a lot of stuff. And, uh, yeah, I live right next door to the guy that's got it. Yeah. I'm just saying, why don't we just really think about what you're, you're authorizing? Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Al. Any more speakers? Any more discussion?
Yeah. So, um, I appreciate that. I think Stafford's is headed in the right direction. I, I still have some concerns about the permit process. Um, so I guess I would need to see, um, better outline of the permit process. I, I still have, um, concerns about going into people, about 13 people's homes, going into people's homes. I understand going in initially for the, for a permit for the water and the lighting issue, um, but I don't think annual inspections, um, are necessary. That's my personal opinion. Um, so, but I think, I'm glad to see that we're moving in the direction of outdoor grow. I think that, um, you know, they're still limited to six plants, but if they wanna grow those six plants outdoors, I think for a lot of people who don't wanna make those kinda modifications to their home, and who, um, and six plants, um, generally speaking, and, and the research I've looked into, um, the issue of an odor is almost nonexistent. I mean, there's a lot of people that grow plants that have, um, smell, and we don't regulate other plants that people grow. I, I think that, uh, people assume that growing marijuana is a pretty simple process, and from my research, I don't think it's as simple as, as people think. So, I have, you know, looked into the issue, so I absolutely think we need to head in the direction of allowing, allowing that, and the accessory structure, I think, is a really good idea also, for, for people who want to be able to, uh, do a combination, or to be able to lock it up. Um, so, in that sense, you know, I appreciate the, all the work that staff's done on this issue. Thank you, chief, for, for working with the community in regards to, uh, so working this out. And, uh, I just, like I said, I have concerns about the whole permit process, so I would need to see that. In reading what the sample of the permit issue is, I, I have some issues with, with some things that are in the permit. Um, I'll get to it. Not being able to flip through my papers anymore. Like I said, I think that, I don't think people should have to get a yearly permit. If we go in one time to inspect because of the water and the electrical issue, um, I understand doing that. I think having people have to go back every year and get another permit and open their home back up for inspection, I, I think is asking too much, um, in my opinion. I don't, we don't, as I said before, there are many things in people's homes that we do not inspect. And we, and, you know, I think it's okay to use health and safety issues when, when we wanna talk about, um, the, the electrical and the water issue, 'cause I don't wanna see, uh, people, you know, overloading, you know, causing structural problems that could cause a fire, which then affects your neighbors, what, um, and what happens in that. Um, I also think that we should go through, and my understanding is, and, and the state did clean-up language, is that they don't really refer to, so when we write ordinance, I really think we need to call it cannabis, because that is the word that the state uses in all of their language now. So, we might as well, if we're gonna do it, get it right the first time, and change all of the marijuana to cannabis, because I understand that is the language that's used in the state law. And my comments regarding it.
Any comments? Councilmember Lansum?
Nope. I'm ready to have a look, and to.
I think that, you know, not knowing, uh, 'cause this goes from, uh, the planning, from the city council to the planning commission next, they will then hold hearings, uh, and make a recommendation on an ordinance, and it will come back before the city council. Um, one other item, I know, Chris, you talked about limitation on height, if there is an outdoor grow. Um, was there any consideration, uh, or given, or in any other jurisdictions, about dispersment? I mean, you know, so that they're not all in one location. I, I mean, in concentration, and this gets to the issue of, of odor, and I know, again, I, you know, I've never, I've never smelled a, a grow, so I don't know what it smells like.
I, I did not see that addressed in other ordinances, uh, creating a dispersion to help keep odor down. I did not see that.
Are you suggesting like three feet between each plant or something?
Something like that, so that they're not all concentrated in one section of the yard. I, and I don't know that that makes any difference or not. I, I don't know. Uh, and, and that could create a hardship, assuming there is outdoor grow allowed, uh, because a lot of the homes here have small backyards, so you don't have a lot of options. Uh, and I do understand that, so I, I didn't know whether that had been considered in other jurisdictions.
I'm not aware of that specific. I've seen where some agencies have just explained that you can have six total, so you can have three indoor, you can have three outdoor. Some agencies, because of some concerns, is their smell, then they will require it to be in the indoor accessory structure. Uh, but others, it's more just limited to the height, so I have not seen a specific one yet that has required like three feet in between plant, but that's, I think, why, uh, the director is recommending at least a conformance to the setback requirement, so the plants aren't right next to the fence to provide somewhat of a buffer, uh, and the height limitation.
So, so on the setback for the plant containers, uh, Chris, is the, is the, is it based on five feet or three feet?
Uh, well, we're recommending the setbacks of the house, so, uh, five feet from the side, 10 feet from the rear, 12 and a half from the street side, and then, uh, must be concealed from public view, so must be in the back.
Okay.
I think that seems a little excessive.
Um, we do have one other speaker, Sherry Daly.
Sorry. Did you want me up an hour? Sorry, Sherry Daly, I live in the city, and, um, I've been involved in the Proposition 64 stakeholder meetings that they're having for implementation, and, and to work out what's happening legislatively after the passage of the initiative. And I just wanted to back up what Greg, um, how he explained what's happening with local ordinances. And the last meeting that I was in, and, uh, there were several representatives from Drug Policy Alliance, which is the, um, initiatives backers, the ones that helped with all the policy, and gathering all of the, um, funding to get the initiative passed. They have two priorities. One of them is the decriminalization part, to get people out of prisons who were formerly convicted for marijuana charges. And the very second priority that they have is to, to take care of these local ordinances that are popping up. And they are bringing serious money to the table, so just as a, a way of warning, they are serious about making sure that no one, uh, breaks new ground in this area, and they have serious funding to make sure that that doesn't happen, so. This is my perspective from being up at Sacramento and watching how they're approaching the whole implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no other comments in the public, um, Steph, do you have sufficient direction at this point?
I think so.
I mean, obviously, this is, you go to the planning commission, um, you know, you can recap the comments here, um, and then get input from them, uh, on an ordinance.
I guess in, I guess general direction, um, I think discussion is focused around, you know, the permit process. Should we move forward with what we, the staff recommended and outlined? No permits, uh, for outside grows and, you know, accessory structures, but indoor. Um, if you're growing inside a residence, you know, look at some sort of permit process for that.
Well, I don't know what, what representation you're going to get from, as council to the commission, since we're missing, uh, 40% of the council, um, yeah. I don't know. Paige, would you wanna provide your, your input?
Yeah, I had suggested a simple permit, like an alarm permit that doesn't cost anything, um, that they just get from the city. So, when calls, people get calls and complaints that they can smell it, then they'll be on record as, as growing. Um, I am concerned with going into homes and, and things like that. So, I would prefer just a much simpler, if we're even gonna have a permit at all, just to, something they can get from the, from the offices or the planning center.
Well, as far as permits go, I mean, if, if you're making modifications to your electrical system, or you're installing vents, that is something that requires a building permit. So, to that extent, I think they should be permitted, uh, like any other home improvement.
Do they have to make modifications to grow it?
Indoors, you do. They don't want to strain a plant, right?
I, I don't know what it takes to do an indoor grow. I don't think we're, you, the, the inspection, in my mind, if there is one, would not include, you know, whatever the tables are, or wherever the plants are located. That's, that's really, uh, however the owner wants to do it, I guess. And I can't imagine that the permit would require them to give a diagram and location of plants and, uh, so forth. I mean, I, I didn't...
The sample permit that they, that staff included actually does talk about, um, it can't be in any kitchen, it can't be in any livable area. I mean, actually...
Well, it has to be in the bedroom, I thought.
Well, it's hilarious. As, as long as no one's sleeping in there.
Well, that's, yeah.
Okay, so I mean, so in fact, we are laying, I mean, the sample permit that was showing actually does lay out where, where it would be, where it would be allowed.
Well, this isn't the recommended permit, is it?
No, it was just a sample of what they, I think for discussion purposes, of where you could head for. I, I, I mean, see, I agree with Councilman Campion, in that if we go down the road of a permit, which I'm not convinced, I do think you need permits if you're, if you're changing electrical and plumbing. I mean, but to get a permit that says, I'm, a permit that says I'm going to grow cannabis, um, state law says they can do it, and, and state law is very clear about the six plants indoors. Basically, that you can grow six plants in your house, and, and it's questionable what kind of local, um, local governance we can provide to that, what kinda local ordinances and enforcement we can do to those indoor grows. I mean, when you read the state law, it pretty much says you can regulate outdoor, and you can regulate, but you can't, uh, but the indoor grow is, is allowed.
It's, it is, you cannot prohibit it, um, it is subject only to reasonable regulation.
And that's where the, that's where the, that's where the court cases will come up, right? What is, what is reasonable, might not be reasonable to someone else. So, um, and like I said, I, I really have a, I have a problem with the renewal fee every year. Um, I just think that if there's a permit issue, it should just be because you're making structural changes to your house, not because you're, um, choosing to grow marijuana. But that's my personal feeling, I mean, that...
I, I would agree with that. I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, okay. So, that's two of us. And, uh, but, you know, just because, like I said, I, as I said last time, you know, there's people with many, many dangerous substances in their house, medication, alcohol, guns, and we don't go in and inspect people's homes. So, now because it's marijuana or cannabis, we're gonna go in and start inspecting people's homes? I understand for the electrical and the water and the health and safety issue, but not just for general purposes, because I think people have a right to privacy.
Well, the state law says that they can do it.
Yeah.
And the city only has the ability for reasonable regulations, and I, I think it's reasonable if you're gonna make alterations that trigger a permit under the Uniform Building Code, then you should, you should have an inspection.
And maybe a year from now, or two years from now, we'll have more data to go on. I mean, as it stands right now, we, we don't have a lot of data about how many people will, um, it, how many, just because the law passed, people, I mean, we have people in the community that are already growing. And, um, will we have more people grow as a result of that? Will it become a law enforcement issue? Does it become a compliance issue? I mean, as it stands right now, we don't have all of that data, and we probably won't have it. And the nice thing about ordinance is, we can come back in a year or two years, and if we need to make revisions, we make revisions, right?
Well, councilmember here, what I hear you saying is you, um, agree with the permit when they first make modifications, but you don't think there should be a yearly inspection?
But I don't think the permit needs to say that I'm getting a permit because I'm growing marijuana. I think the permit needs to be that I'm getting a permit because I'm changing my electrical and water.
So, what I just asked about, um, you don't, you don't think they should have to come back every year and re-inspect? That's what I'm trying to get to. I, I agree with that. I'm trying to get us to have an agreement.
Yeah, I do.
So, we can probably take that off the, um, permit process. Camp, um, Campion, Councilwoman Campion, yes?
I agree with that. I agree with the one-time inspection, assuming that we, that is what ultimately is approved. I, I think the, the concept of, of the accessory structures, as long as they meet standard setbacks, and if they have, uh, power to them, they would also need a one-time inspection, um, or if there's plumbing, the same thing. The area that I've had most concern, I guess, with is, uh, just the outdoor grow in and of itself. But, uh, you know, you, you, you listen to what other jurisdictions are doing. There isn't, uh, a track record, uh, in any given city on the implementation of this whole proposition. So, I think at this point, if they... So I think at this point, if they can have a total of six plants per parcel, and if they choose to do them inside, and if they make modifications, and they would need a one-time permit, if they do it outdoors, they would have to, as for an accessory structure, have permits for one time. And in pots, I guess that would be, I guess, a reasonable accommodation. And as Councilman Hewer said, if we need to revisit it, I think it gets revisited in a year. And again, these are just our comments. As it goes over to the planning commission, they'll have public hearings, and City Council ultimately have another public hearing on this as well.
Yeah, I'll be interested to hear what the planning commission, as this goes forward. And because we're just starting this conversation with the community, I mean, we started it earlier, and, you know, Adam came a month ago, or how long it was, and, yeah, a couple months ago. And, you know, we're starting the discussion, because it is, it is going to be an evolving process. It's not going to be something that just, you know, it's not a one, luckily, we have more than just one time to try to get this right.
And I did have a question, I don't know if Chris or Kim. It says six plants per parcel. Is this just residential parcels, or does this include all parcels?
I have seen, as I recall, in Prop 64, it just talks about personal cultivation. So in some cities, they have limited it to residential parcels, others have allowed it on, you know, other zoning type of parcels, but it's still supposed to be for personal cultivation, assuming you're banning commercial cultivation.
And it's still, just, it would still be six parts, six per parcel anyway?
Six plants.
Okay.
Per person.
No, not per person.
Per parcel.
Not per parcel, correct.
So have other jurisdictions limited it to just residential then?
I have seen some that just limited it to single-family residential, or residential zoning.
Residential, because I would think if you had an apartment and you had the approval of the manager, you could grow an indoor grow. Well, that would, no, you wouldn't be able to, maybe, because apartments that are, it would be a single parcel, but you have multiple apartments.
Well, I think that is an area where I think there is some debate in Prop 64, and to the extent to what a reasonable regulation would be, whether it's an individual, then it's the apartment itself. I believe it's six plants per, in places it says individual, but it's been interpreted to mean to the parcel. So, and you apply it then in an apartment complex, assuming the landlord is willing. I think that's been an area where most landlords have not wanted it in apartments for reasons they often don't want. And the indoor grows of other, other things, because of the water damage and that, that you usually will see with multifamily residential. So we can take a further look, though, and look at that in more detail as we move forward with this, as to whether it is something you would want to explore besides the residential parcels. When we were putting this together, the focus was more on the residential, since Proposition 64 is concerned with the personal use and personal cultivation.
I would think the property owners should, you know, whoever owns the apartment complex should have some say in what occurs, if it's not, you know, standard living, I mean, if they're going to have a horticultural, or a room dedicated to horticulture, I think they would want to know that.
Right.
As part of the lease. And if there was local regulation that would back that up, I think that would probably be helpful.
And I think we had, in the permit regulations, we put together sort of a sample to look at. It would require that, you know, if they, when they come in to get a permit for an indoor inside a residence, they would have to have, they would have to have some showing that the owner or the landlord had signed off on that, similar to what you have with a lot of permits that we require.
Okay.
Yeah, but duplex, you know, it's multi, I mean, how about a rental house?
A rental house, well, you'd still have to...
But I mean, if you're in a, if you owned a duplex, I mean, if you owned half of a, you know, the duplex sits on the full parcel.
Right.
It very, it could be reasonable to assume that a duplex owner could grow.
Mm-hmm. Yes, for theirs.
Yeah, I think there needs to be some clarification on whether it's per person or per parcel.
I, we will look at that, yeah. It was my understanding that was, we've always described it as per parcel typically because of the single, keeping in mind, single-family residences. The multifamily, that's a different issue that I think, usually we focus more on the landlord and the owner, whether they allow it in the first instance.
Okay.
But we will take another look at that.
And it might be something like per dwelling unit.
Right.
Okay, take a look at that. I think that gives us some good direction to move forward and take this to the planning commission.
So, Kimberly, so when you talk about cultivation, it's prohibited on properties, daycare, youth center, group homes, any facility does not allow cultivation of cannabis by law or policy. Is that, I mean, that's in one of your samples.
Mm-hmm.
Is that included in the, was that included in the state law?
I believe that was in Proposition 64.
Thank you.
If that's it, we'll move on. Next one, Human Resources, subject amendment to clerk administrator employment agreement and salary step increase.
Good evening, Council. Before you tonight is the request, is just described, is the amendment, the second amendment for our clerk administrator, and this includes a salary increase, which would take her to the fifth step of the salary range. And as you know, our employees move through the salary range steps typically each year when they meet the standards or exceed the standards. So it's very, you know, typical, it's just that because of the contract, we're bringing the amendment and requesting for approval for that tonight. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
No questions, any questions?
So this is for, to put the city clerk to step five, or?
Yes.
So last time, last year, I'm sorry, I thought we were going to research this more. There was a ten percent, a two-step increase last year?
She was appointed to the position December 2014 as step two. And in February of 16th, she was, did jump two steps, and this will take her to the fifth step.
So is it common to do more than one step a year, or a step a year? I don't know.
It's not common, but it does happen. It's more of an exception than the rule, but it does happen occasionally.
Well, and the reason that there was two steps last year, if I'm, if I'm correct, had to do with Donna's experience and the step that we had started at originally being below what she was actually comparable to, correct?
That sounds very, that sounds accurate.
Exactly what it was. It was to bring her in line, I mean...
Yeah, so every, you know, situations like that, again, it's not very common, but you take into consideration factors like that, and that would be why she received the ten percent.
Any other questions? Or have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I just feel like I haven't, I haven't been on the council long enough to do that. So I thought we tabled, tabled this for tonight. No?
No.
Was it review, or?
There was an evaluation. This is simply the merit that comes up once a year. I don't suspect that the evaluation, at least in my mind, is going to make a difference at this point.
If I'm qualified.
You're a council member, you're qualified.
But I haven't worked with her long enough. Because of the resolution, it would require three votes, so if there is any concern, then you may want to continue to the next meeting.
If you're not comfortable in voting in the affirmative, then I would recommend we continue this, though.
I'll amend my motion, make a motion to continue to the next meeting. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Next item, Public Works Department, award of bid for the Walker Park Soccer Field Lights Project. Mr. Winkler.
Councilmembers, thank you. We're pleased to bring your consideration tonight, award of a contract in the amount of $138,000, $138,520 for the next step in a journey to build out the Walker Park project over the years ahead. As you may recall, we have a very nice artificial turf football soccer field, and a hot lot, and a picnic area, and a parking lot, which were sort of the initial phase that were built a number of years back. We've been working towards the funding to build the next phase of 1B, which is sort of the area, a little hard to see on the slide perhaps, but is the yellow border, would be Phase 1B, but also included in Phase 1B would be lighting of the natural turf fields marked as A on your exhibit on the screen. With the full buildout of Phase 1B would come some youth ballfields, more parking, a bathroom maintenance facility structure, and possibly some amenities for a future snack bar or connections to that, as well as connection of the main entrance driveway to loop back out to Sargent. That's all envisioned as sort of the next, completion of the next major phase. What we're bringing for you tonight is sort of the first step. The remaining phases are currently budgeted in next year's budget, but we are getting some interest and some inquiries and talking with our client, Parks and Rec Department. There's pressure to have more soccer fields available, particularly for night practices and weekend tournaments that go beyond normal daylight hours. As part of one of our strategic goals that the city's adopted, be to bring in more tournaments. And so we saw no reason, have a standalone segment would be to add the lighting to the few of the natural turf fields on the north end of the park. Really don't have a whole lot of continuity with the remaining Phase 1B improvements. So we've accelerated that project. We're actually sort of borrowing design money for the next phase to help get this off the ground. We are asking for, in addition to the contract award, a standard 10% project contingency, and authorizing the city manager to execute change order amendments within that contingency amount, and then authorize us to issue notes of completion upon satisfactory completion of the improvements. And to do that, we need a supplemental appropriation tonight of $138,000. And I misspoke earlier, the actual contract award is $387,450. The supplemental appropriation would be $138,520, and that we didn't really have any construction budgeted in the current year budget. So this would basically be approving a supplemental allocation to let us award this contract. It'll ultimately come out of the CIP project balance that's budgeted over the two-year budget cycle. We'd be happy to entertain any questions. Mr. Scholies and I are here to talk about the bigger picture, and we have staff here that put the recommendations and the bids together, and we believe we have a good project, and we'd recommend your approval.
Any questions?
I had a question on the, you're, you're doing restoration of the existing soccer field facilities. Is that in regards to the lighting itself?
Well, we're going to have to do some trenching, underground conduit, we're going to be drilling foundations and concrete work.
Okay.
So any damage that's done, fences might have to be, portions of fences, it all has to be restored to its original condition as part of the lighting and light standards work.
Okay. Any other comments?
Ramondo, do we currently, do we charge a fee for the use of the soccer facilities?
Depending on who's using it, we currently have a facility use agreement with the high school district, elementary district, and we have a $10 per player fee for local youth groups.
Would there be a need to, if we install lighting on the soccer field, would there be a need to look at the fee structure?
I encourage you to look at the fee structure annually. We, the last staff board, I think we presented, we were subsidizing quite a bit of that fee for some of these organizations.
Do you think there's, where there'll be a lot, do you think there'll be a lot of use of the facility, more use of the facilities by having the lighting?
Yes, there will be. We currently had to host Liberty Ranch and Galt's, both boys' and girls' soccer team this year. Their field wasn't playable, Galt High Schools wasn't, so they shared the field along with the Galt FC and Catalani Youth Soccer. So it was quite crowded, especially at this time of year during soccer season, the daylight savings time, it gets dark pretty quick, and so I could easily use all three fields year round.
Well, you know, I absolutely agree with the light, the lighting project, but I do think that we need to think about, again, our fee structure, I mean, those facilities, the maintaining of the soccer fields, especially with that heavy of the usage, along with the lights, and what kind of fee structure. I mean, I understand we have an agreement with the high school districts, but if we have private groups using the facility, that it's, that we have some money going toward maintenance, because, you know, to ask the, to ask the citizens of Galt to, the taxpayers to pay for all of the maintenance of these facilities and that are being used, I just, you know, that's my only concern. I mean, and that's a side note to the others.
I would say the majority of the usage is by the school districts and by the $10 per player youth fee organizations.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Was there public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There wasn't.
There was no public comment?
Sorry.
Call for a vote?
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campion?
Aye.
Just on a note, have we looked into maybe putting cell towers on top of those lights? Do they still, do some of the cell services still like to do that? I know they do that at Galt High.
I defer that question.
They'd like to pay a nice little fee.
We haven't proactively sought that out. Once the standards are up, we may be approached by companies, and we typically work for the city manager's office on looking into permitting and or entering into agreements. Typically, there'd be revenue associated with that. So it would be a possible revenue option to offset the cost of some of the construction and or operation of the lights.
Just a thought.
Next item, approval of amendments to consultants' agreements for closeout of the West Far Treatment Plant Upgrade Project. Mr. Winkler.
Councilmembers, this is, this item is to approve a number of contract amendments, and Mr. Clarkson will be making a presentation. We thought we would start with an overview of where we're at with the project. This is one of the largest state construction projects the city's accomplished, certainly in the four and a half years I've been here, but also probably going back another, back in Central Galt Interchange Project, and it nearly doubled the price of that project. So it's been a big project for the city, it's been in the works ever since I got here, and construction has been extended over a multiple year period. So we're pleased to announce that we're closing in on the final. Some of the, we'll talk about the details in a minute, but the contract amendments are basically to get us across the finish line. There've been some construction delays and some extra things that we've asked the consultants to do for us to get us to a great finished product. And so we thought before we talked about those specifics, that we'd give you a quick overview of the project.
Council, Mark Clarkson, city engineer. With that introduction, you know, I thought I was going to have a bigger audience here tonight, because this is, besides the eight, the eight is enough, but it's not enough, maybe, kids that were here. That was, that was pretty good. But overview of the plant project, one of the council members has been here the whole time that we started this. He's probably seen some of these slides during this time. I've just tried to make it familiarized of what we had. The entire project was driven by regulatory reasons, there was nothing else driving this project. And in 210, we had a discharge permit that required certain actions. 215, we had to meet certain... 215, we had to meet certain, certain requirements, regulatory requirements. We had facilities out there that were built in nineteen eighty, ninety and also in two thousand and ten and some of these facilities we looked at would be able to help us with the 210 new requirements and some of them would have to be modified and others we'd have to do new facilities itself. But it took a lot of review, a lot of things involved in the process, from master plans to EIRs, designs, conceptual plans. We needed funding. This was gonna be a twenty-five plus million dollar project. And so back when it was initially identified, we knew there was some big steps to go through to meet the 215 requirements. And what you have is what was predicted on one side and, do we have a laser? Predicted here, and that was predicted back in two thousand and twelve and then the actuals, we hit some targets, missed a couple others, but the key one was the October fifteenth or the, to meet the two thousand and fifteen deadlines right in here, which we did. During this period, we also pulled an ace out of the hole and got the state to extend our TSO requirement for about a year. But they wanted to make sure we were under construction before they even considered that. So there was a lot of little steps that we had to do in here to get to this point. Our project estimate back when we did the SRF allocation was about twenty-six million dollars. We're just under the, the one column where it says projected final costs, we're actually a little more than six hundred thousand dollars less than that. We're just under twenty-five million right now. When we first put this together, we did a typo and six hundred thousand dollars got carried over into the soft costs that shouldn't have been there. And, but we're just under twenty-five million right now on our projected final costs. Something going on with the voice here? Okay. You don't notice it, I won't notice it. Construction in progress. I mean, this went on, what's that?
You're just in the ten count, it's okay.
Okay. Get the string a little tighter. We have, the construction went on for a couple of years, two and a half years, and even though the director said we had delays, I never look at them as delays, I just look at them as opportunities to get the things right as we needed on the construction. We had infrastructure that was done, that was put in. We did remodeling of some of our facilities out there, reassessing a bunch of things. We've completed, all the processes were completed back in the fall and where we are today is just a couple of things remaining, punch lists, items and things that are going on right now. These are just items out there that if you want to come out for a tour, we'll probably talk about that in a second, it's a perfect time for it. We, these are some of the buildings that we added or added to or remodeled. The one on the left was a brand new one with a generator system. This one here was the original building that was out in the wastewater plant back in nineteen eighty. We completely remodeled it as a lab, a full high-tech lab. And then this one, we added a little section of the administration building out here for utilities. Right now, we have all of the water, wastewater and, and maintenance related to utilities is out at this site now. We were able to bring them from other sites, Golden Heights and around and bring them into, into the one site here. Just a quick overview, every part of this plant was touched to meet the regulatory requirements. We also did a couple of things to meet some delayed maintenance that we had, that had been needing for over twenty-five years at the site. And so where the yellow is, is all the facilities that were touched out at the plant in the construction. Lot of unknowns, a lot of things that when we first started designing or even in the environmental work, didn't know it would be this, this great of, of contact that we would have on the original footprint. This is the plant right now. We took this picture last week at about a thousand foot high and all of the, you just go back, you don't have that in your handout. This is a new one that I brought. It, I didn't get this picture until late, late Thursday and it just didn't get into the package, so. But going back and forth, but it is available now and you can see the differences that we have in there and the construction is done. We have a parking lot pavement, everything completed there. Now, we have some remaining tasks. In front of you are the first two items, giving authorization to the director to, to issue a notice of completion and also four addendums or amendments to existing contracts. The four amendments are, are a little bit for the CM, design engineering on the project that we've asked them to do, some SCADA review of, for security reasons, the twenty thousand dollars there and it's explained in there and, and then some, the financial plan that we brought to you last year, they had that review. There was some extra work that we had on that. The next couple of items are things that were in progress right now, punch lists, completing as-built, some final expenditures on the project. The SRF, still need to deal with that and paying that back. And we're underway with a rate study that will be before you as, in a workshop, hopefully in May, and then there'll be another workshop in July and then, and we'll get direction at that time for that. Now, this is the A-team out there. These guys are the ones who made this work. Now, again, just like here, some of these guys weren't here from the beginning, but a bunch of them were, and they're the ones that made this project really work as far as getting it operational, keeping it operational and for the future. This is what we have, guys and gal that we have out there. I don't know how that engineer snuck in there. Engineers just get everywhere. They just sneak everywhere. Anyway, I'm open for any questions.
While you're thinking, maybe as a wrap, we're recommending four different contract amendments totaling two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars and change. A large percentage of that is actually offset through the final construction contract costs and concessions the contractor made as a result of not meeting their final milestones. So we're actually coming in under total budget on the contract, or a little over on our consultant costs and well under on our construction costs.
So that, yeah, I mean, how often do you hear of projects that come in under budget, particularly coming in the budget looking almost like a million dollars under budget? So congratulations and good, great job. I mean, that's fantastic and I would like to schedule another tour. I haven't been out there in a little, I guess it's been a year and a half or so. I would like to come out again and see it now that it's completed. It was the construction zone the last time I was out.
Well, we've had another request as well and we're looking to schedule something in early April and we'll certainly invite all council members. I think the press is asked to tag along and so we'd be happy to do that and if there are others that are hearing this and are interested, can contact our office. We're working on dates that'll work for the councils.
I know Planning Commission has talked before about being interested in seeing some of our facilities because they're making decisions that regard our facilities and they are not, so I would really like it if we would include the Planning Commission and leave the invitation to the Planning Commission so that they can come see. I mean, the wastewater treatment plant was fascinating to me. I thought it would be, I thought, oh, this is gonna be a really, not, not my, it was, maybe it was your presentation, Mark. It was, it was really interesting the day I came out to see it.
You know, you mentioned, councilmember, that you mentioned about getting it under budget. It was a big team effort. I had design consultants working on New Year's Eve at three o'clock in the morning. I've had, you know, different of our staff working twenty-four hours in a row, helping processes and getting things done. It was just incredible amount of, you know, journey for everybody to be a part of that and to get us where we're at today. And this plant, this plant is really set for at least another two thousand customers coming on residential equivalents and it's also set, what we did at this time is we set it for the future so we can just plug in a few more units, really easily to do, not, not, we don't have to touch the whole plant like we did there and be able to do a future growth, you know, allow for that here in the city. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of things happen from planning on the environmental end of it all the way through to maintenance, so.
Great job, because you always hear about projects coming in over budget, not under budget, so I think that's, that really just shows the dedication of you and your team.
Sounds good, I mean, very good. I mean, over a multi-year project, that's, that's excellent.
So I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Healer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lanson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Campbell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Communications, any communications? City clerk's report?
Nothing tonight.
Comments with staff?
Nothing tonight.
Okay.
Your comment about planning commission's timely, we are meeting with the planning commission this Thursday and I'll see if there are any volunteers or people wanting to go visit the wastewater treatment plant and bring that up.
Steve, any comments?
Nothing new to add. We got through the storms and now we've got weeds growing everywhere, so if you're wearing green for St. Patrick's Day, you wanna keep moving because it gets afraid if you're sitting still.
Paula, you, this is your last meeting with the city of Galt. Well, you must have something to say.
I do. I just wanna say thank you very much for the opportunity to work here. I can't believe it's been fourteen years and I've learned a lot and had the opportunity to work with a lot of great people and I think that our employees are very committed to what they do and they really care about the community and I think that's just a really nice environment to work in. I think we have a great city manager that has been very collaborative and that was one of the hard decisions leaving because I think that he's very supportive of employees and staff, but I'm just, personally, I'm ready to move and I'm gonna be in Oregon in the week of March twentieth. So again, thank you so much. It's been really a pleasure to work here.
So you're retiring, correct?
Yes, I'll be working, but I'll be retiring from California. But I already have a house there and it's waiting for me and so I'm ready to go in a couple of weeks and we have an interim HR administrator, director that will be starting actually on Thursday and I get to spend a number of days with him before I leave and he is just, we met with him last week, he's amazing. So the first thing he's going to do is meet with each department head and talk to them about their needs and, you know, just, I don't know what I wanna say, I'm kinda caught off guard now. Just the pluses and minuses of the human resources, what services can be approved upon and I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for the next person that takes this position. And we have interviews set next Tuesday. We have five really good candidates, so I think it's really just a positive thing all the way around.
I wish you best in your retirement, Paula, and thank you for the assistance you've given me over the last couple of years as a new council member. You know, two years ago, you spent time with me explaining, you know, all of the benefit packages and everything for our employees and you've always been really patient with me, so I really appreciate that and we're gonna miss you, but I wish you the best. I'm jealous, move on to Oregon, we're not have this heat.
Thank you.
Take care of yourself and best of luck to you and your family.
Good luck on a new adventure. Yes. Armando, see, only one comment, it's, I already missed Paula.
You will be missed and we appreciate everything you've done for the city for the fourteen years, fifteen years? Fourteen years, so thank you very much.
Anything else, Mr. Manager? City Attorney?
No, I just appreciate how patient and kind everybody has been as I've been getting my feet under me, so thank you.
All right, well, that, our council, any comments?
I attended a, the high school district facilities planning meeting yesterday and trying to get the facts out there, there's a lot of stuff going on. They are in the process of working on tearing down the condemned portables, they just have to study them, make sure there's no asbestos and everything and their goal is to start that as soon as school's out. High school kids kind of, it's gonna, it's gonna be lovely not to have kids on campus while they're tearing things down just from a teacher's point of view. Also, they, they are going to finish the Liberty Ranch stadium first because it will take probably more than three months to get it planned and then both high schools will play there while they're rehabilitating the Galt High Stadium. So there has been a concern, wondering why they're doing Liberty Ranch first, but we have to have a stadium, a workable stadium, so while they're fixing that, they'll work there. So encourage anyone who wants to go, those meetings to go. And then I went to a youth commission meeting and we are starting our search for new youth commission members, so if you know of any outstanding youth coming up who would like to serve on that commission, applications will be coming out shortly. Is that it?
So on February twenty-third, I attended the library authority meeting and I received an email from Ms. Suddles that I had been appoint, that I'd like to thank the city of Rancho Cordova and the city of Folsom and city of Galt that I was appointed to the cable commission, so the SAC Metro Cable Commission. Their next meeting will be in June, they meet quarterly. For a number of reasons, I saw future agenda items I'd like to have put on the agenda for the next meeting. I want to, I've chosen for personal reasons to resign from the shop local. They meet every week, weekly at eight-thirty if I, due to my family commitments, due to my grandson, maybe grandma, I can't, eight-thirty in the morning every, every Wednesday is more of a commitment than I'm currently can make. So if we can agendize that for the next meeting so council can make another appointment, otherwise, I think that's it. Everything else is great. Thank you.
Gene, you and the mayor speak at the chamber meeting next Thursday, is it the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Thank you for the reminder, that is correct. There'll still be a state of the city addressed by me and the mayor.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.